Commissioner's Court of Brazos County will be ready for session on May 15, 2018, 10:00 AM. Commissioner's Court, Room 2, County Administration Bill 2 on South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item only against in case of alleged allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, which is Catholic and Native American.
Our Heavenly Father, we pause by for the main questions here, so far as we ask you to be with us here this morning and guide us as we make decisions that affect all of Brazos County. Our Heavenly Father, please be with all our first responders, all our military men and women around the world who are serving today and away from their families so that we're able to meet as we are here today. And here we go, man.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to your beloved four hundred states, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
The second item only against call for citizens' input and our concerns. We'll go to number three, and that's presentation and our discussions. A, first is the recognition of Brazos County Employee Walk Across Texas Competition.
Good morning. First, I would like to congratulate everyone who participated in Walk Across Texas this past year. We had seven teams walk a total of 11,756 miles in just eight weeks. Departments that participated in this friendly competition include the Brazos County Health Department, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, the county attorney, risk management, HR, and the Health and Wellness Clinic, the commissioner's court, and precinct three. The first place team this year is Brazos County, for the Brazos County Employee Competition, is the Brazos County Health Department Red Team, seen here today. Team members include Delia Sandoval, Karen Sandoval, Jonas Gonzalez, Sarah Mendez, Bob Lamkin, Maria Hernandez, Maribel Navaloska, and Holly Ulbrich. It is with great pride that I present the ever coveted Golden Shoe.
B is annual update on Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Apologize first off for not being here in March to give you the update like we normally do, so we're two months late, but you'll see in a minute why we weren't. Things have been very, very busy. I'd like to give you an annual report of what's going on at the Brazos Valley Groundwater Conservation District, starting off with our regional planning. The 2021 State Water Plan is already being worked on, started in April of 2017, and that's not of great significance except for that they knew how to have a new tool known as the MAG peaking factor, it's Model Available Groundwater Peaking Factor, and how that affects our district is that most of our municipalities' rural water supplies are on groundwater. And in the planning process, if they at Region G see that we have our model available groundwater within our different counties, and once it hits on paper that MAG factor, then groundwater, then municipalities or anybody seeking SWIFT funding from the state wouldn't be eligible. So they determined that, because we don't manage to that cap, we manage to what's actually happening in the offers. So they've realized it at the Water Development Board, and they allowed us to now use this peaking factor, which is simply saying, some years we pump more than what is the average, and some years we're pumping less than what the average. So they looked at that over our historical, the last 10 years, and then superimposed that on what's going to happen out into 2070. So City College Station just got, we just approved a MAG peaking factor to allow 20% over the model available groundwater, which will allow Bryan, College Station, any of these entities to be able to enter into this round of planning and allow them to seek SWIFT funding. So College Station does have some groundwater projects they're going to be doing over the next five years, so they're going to be eligible to get in that. That's just happened in the last few days. That's not 2017, but it started all the way back in 2017. So I thought I'd bring you up to date on that.
Is there a range of funding? Is there a range of funding?
This next round of funding, that's basically what the regional water plan is and state water plan is, that yes, we are in need of a, they plan to the worst-case scenario, the driest drought year, and in order to get funding, your project has to be in the plan, has to be approved as a viable method of obtaining water. So at this point, we'll be able to exceed in Brazos County by 20%, which is going to allow, right now, I said, College Station has two wells that they're planning in the next five-year period, so it allows them to get in and apply for funding through the SWIFT fund, so.
Pardon me, but, okay, just so I understand things correctly, so the new tool would allow the state water, the SWIFT, since we're all groundwater, SWIFT, this would allow us to have access to compensate for other communities that have surface water?
This will allow, all it does, Steve, is it takes that cap that they said, 50,000 acre feet in Brazos County, and once that's all allotted, then you can't, and you come to the, to state water or to regional and say, we have a, we need two wells, well, I'm sorry, it's capped, you're not eligible. This allows, starting at the groundwater district, we have to approve that, yes, we can, we can exceed that MAG by 20% over the next 50-year period, and it'll be fine. We do the modeling, City College Station actually paid for that modeling to make sure that we weren't going to affect our desired future conditions. Then we had to take that to GMA 12, and all five districts within GMA 12 had to agree that it's not going to affect our desired future conditions. That goes on back to Region G, and then they send that up to the Water Development Board. So there's four levels that have to be, that have to be approved.
But this was to allow us to be able to compensation for communities like ours that do not use, have a surface water access function in that program?
Absolutely, yes.
And my question is, how much is the funding? How much will we receive or anyone receive?
SWIFT is simply low-interest loans over long periods of time, and that's all done through the Water Development Board. All our part in this, Irma, was to allow them to be eligible to go through that process. Okay? In our, we have recently adopted the desired future conditions for all eight of our aquifers. That was finalized in January of 2018, and we have just, on May the 11th, have passed the 150-day challenge period. So all of our DFS, our desired future conditions for each of our offers have now been adopted or in place for the next five years. We have a new groundwater availability model that we, the district paid about $130,000 of a total of $680,000 to update that model. We knew that it was underestimating what we have in the offers and how the offers are actually responding to pumping. We felt it very important to be a partner in that with the Water Development Board and Post Oak Savannah Groundwater District, and we should have that model available to us sometime in the late summer or early fall as we enter our next round, five-year round of desired future against and planning. So we're excited about that. That's, that's right around the corner. And following on that, we have 158 monitoring wells that we measure quarterly, and Megan, Megan Haas back here, she's our educational coordinator and outreach coordinator, but she's also probably doing the lion's share of the well monitoring. I help from time to time, but she gets most of them. And that's how we actually are able to manage the offers based on those well measurements and watching that static level go up and down over time, rather than that modeled number that they give us through the, through those groundwater models, we actually watch what's happening in the offer. So that, that is very important. A lot of people don't understand that. I will update you on the Simsboro, so that's where most of the water is pumped from, the lion's share of it by far. The desired future condition in 2070 is a total reduction of no more than 295 feet from 2000 to 2070. We update, every year we update the board on where we are based, each offer based on that desired future condition. Currently, the Simsboro, we have, from 2000 to 2018, the Artesian reduction has been 31 feet of that 295, which is about 10 and a half percent of that, of the Artesian head. The groundwater model, though, says that by this time, we should have already reduced it by about 27%. That's why the groundwater model update was so important, because obviously the offers are responding differently than what the groundwater model was assuming would happen. So that's a, that's a very, very positive note, continues to be exactly what we thought that it was going to be. Our fees remain the same across the board for 2018 that we had in 2017. We, we brought in about $7,000 less than what we had in, in 2016. Every year since 2011, there's been less pumping across the board, especially from rural water supplies and municipalities, which is, which is a good thing. We, but it, it does affect our bottom line, but that's all right. We, we're still well-funded, so we feel good about that. Our grant program, we started that in 2014. In 2017, we granted $8,200 to two Soil and Water Conservation Districts, one Robertson County, one Brazos County, to take up to 100 water samples from wells in the Brazos River Louvion, because we were having a lot of problem with solubility, a lot of sodium in the water, a lot of, and what we were wanting to do is encourage them to find more efficient use of water for irrigation. And we're wanting to couple the water sample with soil samples, so that we can find if there's soil amenities that could be, amendments that can be made to increase the efficiency of irrigation, that's where we're headed with that. So that's, those samples are being taken now, and we'll have some type of results on that during 2018. On our, we still have the Brazos, the BV Water Smart, I know y'all see it on TV all the time, the little one-minute clips, and it leads you to our irrigation network. That's been a tremendous success in our eyes. We currently had, well, last year through the first nine months, we had 186,000 hits on that website, and solely, solely because of those infomercials that we put on television and driving them towards the, towards the, that irrigation network. So the board continues to fund that yearly, and we've seen that as being a real success. We did have some rule changes that were, that are important. Contiguous acreages, it was redefined or revised to indicate all, when we, when we permit a well, we have to protect the property rights around that well, and formerly, the contiguous acres were, 50% of it had to be around the wellhead, the rest of it can be over here. And the board said, we've got to protect all the property rights, so now our, our footprint, our cone of depression that we draw is 100% of that has to be at the wellhead and in the shape of the cone of depression, which is basically a circle. So that was changed. We allowed for, again, in protection of property rights, if someone happened to come in and need a well, and they were in, were spaced out by our spacing rules, and we're not allowed to, to get their amount of water based on their footprint because there's an existing well that was back in 2006 or whenever it may have been, an existing well, we have now exempted that spacing in order, because if you own the land, you own the water. So that has now been exempted for you can actually, if that does happen, they can come and get the water that's based on our rules today. We also are requiring applicants to bring some type of affi, well, some type of document that says, we have the legal right to produce that water, and they have to have an affidavit with that signed and noted, as says, the documents I'm bringing to you allow for us to have the right to produce the groundwater. And that's a big thing, because you can't just come in anymore and say, sure, I have the right. You, and I had, we had already been doing this, but it is, it's formerly in the rules now. One last thing, and I'll turn it over to Megan. Well-plugging, we still have well-plugging program, and last year, we plugged 19 wells, and cost shared $17,500 on that. That continues to go up every single year. We've got a lot of wells down in the Brazos Bottom, old 16-inch irrigation wells that people have walked away from over the years, and a lot of those are now being plugged. So we feel, I think that's just going to continually get more as people understand we have a cost share program. I'm going to let Megan finish up by telling you about our education.
Okay, so education, that's one of our big things that we do. Like you said, we weren't able to come in March because we were in classrooms teaching. We taught approximately about 8,700 kids in fourth, fifth, and seventh grades. 1,500 of that was at the AgriLife Extension's Pizza Ranch that they put on in September every year. We also had about 275 at our Water Field Day in Robertson County. The other 7,000 of them were actually in a classroom setting, 20 kids at a time. We hit every ISD in Brazos and Robertson Counties, so we do, and in Brazos County, we also do Allen Academy, St. Joseph's, and Brazos Christian. So we were in 50 of the schools in Brazos and Robertson County. We taught about 350 presentations over 81 days. We also in seventh grade do a lab, we did 106 labs with all the seventh graders, they do a water quality lab, and that equates to about, out of the school year, September through May, we were in the classroom about 47% of the school year, we were in a classroom teaching kids about groundwater and aquifers and water quality. So we have that Water Field Day in Robertson County. One thing we're trying to do now is bring that Water Field Day that we do for fifth graders in Robertson County, bring it to the fifth graders in Brazos County. This next year, we're hoping to at least do at least one of the fifth-grade schools, try to get all the logistics of how that works, since the schools are so much bigger in Brazos County, and we're hoping in a couple of years, every fifth grade in Bryan and College Station ISD will get to have a Water Field Day just like the fifth graders in all the Robertson County schools, so.
And education was the reason we weren't able to be here in March, because we were in schools, and we're proud of it, so. Any questions?
But reasonable excuse.
We're now seeing kids, before Megan came, I was doing it by myself, of course, we've doubled the size since she's come, but I now have kids that we've seen in fourth grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade. So I told them the other day, y'all have now graduated from Water 101 after four years, took you four years, but now you've now graduated, so. If y'all have any questions, we just appreciate y'all's support, and if you ever have questions, don't hesitate to call us. Thank y'all.
I'll do a great job. C is 2017 economic support, the economic development agreements monitored by Research and Parks Partnership of Brazos County. Just to let you know that, Dan, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. It's always a pleasure to come here, and sometimes we visit you after, but I'm glad that we're here on a, on a healthy water supply in our community and more talent development in our marketplace. And I always like walking a mile in someone's shoes as well, so I think we're all, the bases are covered. We, I come here this morning joined by Matt Perhausk, our president and CEO, but we want to begin by first thanking the county for the public resources that the county provides to the partnership and our efforts to support, our combined efforts to grow and expand our, and diversify our economy. Quality business investments and job creation, quality job creation continue to accelerate in our community, and as part of the partnership's role as an outside agency, we're here this morning to provide an annual report on the active incentive agreements that we're, that we're helping to monitor. Next slide, please. So as an overview, we'll, we'll talk about seven projects that are under agreement between RVP and the county, two cities. Of these projects, one of those is in the county, even though it's in the ETJ of Bryan, it's designated as in the county. We have three that are in the city of Bryan, and three that are in the city of College Station. We're always mindful that companies always have a, have an option of where they call business, and so we look at these projects and our other efforts to help continue to support companies in our marketplace. The report that we'll give you, just as a high-level summary, over 900 jobs are in this report, over $54.5 million in payroll, and over $307.4 million in valuations. Next slide, please. I'll begin with the newest corporate citizen in our marketplace, Adana. Adana, I might go a little bit, scroll down, there you go.
I have a computer, and I want to figure out what the case is, you know?
Yeah, you're good. So this is a company that moved into our market from Argentina. This is an agricultural genetic R&amp;D company. Their flagship crop that they're studying here, or commercializing here in our marketplace is sorghum, which is a really healthy product in our marketplace. This is a project that's located in County Precinct Four, Commissioner Colley's. Actually, I was double-checking that, because I didn't realize that Commissioner Berry's precinct covers main campus, and the dividing line is Walburn. And so, in the research park, this covers, and the Commissioner precinct four, and Commissioner Aldrich's district is right on that bottom line as well, so it's kind of an interesting market, it's like a market location. But nevertheless, this company did their groundbreaking, or the ribbon-cutting actually, in January this year. The partnership has already paid out a $25,000 incentive agreement for that ribbon-cutting and the commitment to be in that facility and the research park, Texas A&amp;M University's Research Park. They're negotiating an R&amp;D agreement with the university, and that'll be the second tranche of that incentive payment. In 2017, the payroll, they exceeded that number of 2.3 million requirement, and they reached 2.4 million. The investment value, they exceeded that as well in terms of the personal property, and the job creation was in excess of that employment. One of the things that you might not see on this slide, it's looking a little bit lower, but the company actually had an $80,000 average annual salary requirement, and the numbers that have come in, in fact, that number is 90,718. So they, and that's per job, or per, average per salary, so it's a very healthy company in our, in our marketplace, providing some great jobs for, in the agricultural sector. The next company that we'll talk about is also in Precinct Four, Commissioner Colley's District. This is the one I mentioned earlier that's in the ETJ of Bryan. This is Axis Pipe and Tube, it's a steel manufacturing company, and this particular incentive agreement has a funding formula that allows it to qualify for its incentives based on a combination of the payroll and the property investment, real property investment, and the employment numbers. And you'll see that they've exceeded in all those categories, with the exception of the employment section, but nevertheless, it did meet, I think, the threshold that was required. I'll point out that also, just recently, Blend College took the lead on helping to secure a Texas Workforce Commission grant, the Safety and Skills Training Grant, and there, it's about $469,000 that will go to the company, and that will train 197 employees. And so that additional employees that will come in will be reflected in the 2018 number next year when we report. The next company is Fuji Film Dia sent. I'll just, as long as we're talking about the Blend College, Texas Workforce Commission Safety and Skills Development Grant, this company also received $289,000 in grant funding, and that, those will train 140 of their employees, both current and those that they're adding into it. This is also in Commissioner Precinct Four's district. This is a biom manufacturing facility. This was, as the court knows, we were under, are evaluating this transition from Texas A&amp;M University Systems ownership of this building last year, in which that transition had occurred, but in that transition, the appraisal, appraisal district's value of this particular facility did not reflect the entire finished facility. It only actually reflected one of the two buildings that were out there, and it only reflected the real property, not the personal property. So in 2017, they, the company has, has forgotten that payment that they would be looking to receive from the jurisdictions. I know that the appraisal district has hired a consultant to be able to write slides that evaluation, and that report, I understand, is, is, I think, is due this week, and so the value, that reported value will be posted, I think, at the end of this week for the 2018 numbers. And so the information that the company has provided us at this point is that they've invested over $73 million in new value at the, at the facility, and we'll have to wait to see what that number looks like in terms of the 2018, once it goes through all that contestant period and so forth. So we'll need to keep a mindful eye on this particular project, but in any event, that's the information that we will, will report on this particular facility. Yes, ma'am?
You said, so the College Station in Bryan, and you can't do not give them a cash incentive from 2017, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because they did not request?
Yes, ma'am. I think, in this particular case, it wasn't necessarily an abatement, it was more as a 380, 381 agreement. So they pay in the taxes, and then they get a grant, a portion, a proportion of grant paid back, and because they didn't meet that 2017 threshold, then, you know, that's off the table. The next facility that we'll cover is LSPI, that's Berkshire Hathaway Company, the long name of that is Lubrissol Specialty Products. This is their new Freedom Plant Facility. As the court may remember, there was a prior agreement with LSPI, that's now back on the books for the current Independence Plant, but this is the, the new addition. And the partnership has already paid on the building permit and the certificate of occupancy that's been issued on those, but I apologize, this is a specialty chemicals manufacturing plant at that Freedom Freedom Plant location. This is also in Commissioner Precinct Four, Commissioner Colley's area. Um, the, in terms of the, the num, the, the numbers that they actually had to meet on this particular, uh, twenty-seventeen cycle, was the payroll number and the employment number. The, the investment value doesn't kick in until, um, uh, next year in twenty-eighteen. Um, but in terms of the payroll, um, they exceeded that number of one-point-five million requirement, and the twenty-four jobs, they actually had twenty-eight. Uh, I did take a look, um, this morning, right before I came to the court, um, what that twenty-eighteen looks like, because obviously, four-point-four million is pretty down in terms of what the twenty-million requirement for next year. Um, the twenty-eighteen numbers, looks like it's forty-three million, uh, in, in, in value, so they would have met that in both real and personal. So, I, I don't think that this is going to be a, an issue going forward, uh, for twenty-eighteen, but in any case, this is only for twenty-seventeen numbers. Um, and as just a little last note on this, is, uh, they had to, to, uh, to invest twenty-five million dollars in, in, uh, capital investments, and, and the facility actually exceeded sixty-two million dollars. Um, the next project is Nutribolt. Uh, this is a nutraceutical and functional foods, uh, company. Their corporate headquarters are in the, in the Baucorridor. Um, Commissioner Catalina, this is in, uh, Commissioner Precinct Two. Um, this particular company, uh, continues to exceed all their, um, their requirements of, on payroll of three-million dollars required, and they're exceeding that exponentially on, on payroll. And these are only the jobs that are in, in Bryan, College Station, or Brazos County, I should say, um, and not at their other facilities. Um, their investment value also exceeds, um, that nine-million-dollar requirement, as well as the employment number. So, this is a, a great company, uh, that's reflective in, in that, uh, targeted area of our community. Uh, the next company, um, now, some of the, uh, members of the court may have attended this recent ribbon-cutting. Um, well, Matt and I were, were, uh, looking at how impressive it is to have a ribbon-cutting with the, uh, an Aggie Cannon. Uh, we've never seen that one before, but I don't think there's going to be any, uh, crows or birds flying around that area, uh, anytime soon, but, uh, this is a very handsome internet wireless communication, telecommunications company that's, uh, set up their facility here. It's beautiful, beautiful building. Um, this is also in, in Commissioner Precinct Four, Commissioner Colley's area, and the only, um, this, this particular company doesn't necessarily have any metrics to, to meet, other than just having their groundbreakings and ribbon-cuttings, um, because a lot of their, their performance requirements are in the out years. Uh, but we did want to at least, uh, share with the, the court, uh, that initial start in twenty-seventeen. Now, the twenty-eighteen numbers, again, with the new building, that's going to be substantially more in, in terms of what that looks like, but in twenty-seventeen, they had, uh, already begun that, that ramp-up of that, that particular location. And the last, um, uh, company that we'll report on is Wayfair. Um, a really large, um, industry player in, in their market segment. Uh, this is, uh, again, a customer contact center, uh, that's located north of Veterans Park. Uh, this is in, uh, also in Commissioner Catalina's precinct. Um, it continues to serve as a, a great anchor for the, the expansion of University Drive East, and, uh, in terms of their, um, their metrics, while they did have to meet a payroll requirement this year, um, we show that number, uh, as well as the, the employment number, uh, they didn't have to do that also, but the, they did have to meet a personal property, um, threshold, and that was, uh, exceeded on their personal property side. So, with that, um, the one thing I'll note on this one, um, as well, um, Judge and Commissioners, is, um, the company, um, in terms of the partnership, uh, we paid that initial lease payment, or at least incentive, when they first executed it, and then they just, uh, last month, they, they hit that twenty-four-month, uh, time, so there have been twenty-four months in our marketplace, and so we'll, uh, pay out that remain, that second thirty-three-thousand-dollar incentive payment, and that is, um, half, uh, half of that will come from the prime business council, and so we'll, uh, invoice the, the council for, for that receipt of funds. But, uh, other than that, I, we conclude our report. We're happy to answer any questions, uh, but again, thank you so much for the, the support and leadership that you provide the partnership.
All the papers say aye? Motion carriers, number seven, is request from Information Technology Department to approve change order Q four-eight-nine-three-L-A-dash-zero-one to Tri-Tech Inform RMS Project. All the papers say aye? Motion carriers, number twelve, is consider and take action on Wixon Creek's Special Utility District Utility Permit to construct three roadboards crossing under Shirley Road. Crossings will be encased to a minimum of thirty-six inches below the bottom of the ditch. Lines will provide service to customers at sixty-nine, seventy-five, seventy-nineteen, and seventy-six-three Shirley Road, site located Precinct Two. Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye? Opposed. Motion carriers, number thirteen, approval of treasurer's report for March and the quarter ending, uh, three-thirty-one-eighteen.
Motion approval?
Second. Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye? Opposed. Motion carriers, number fifteen, tax refund application for the population.
Do they have a fourteen or two?
Uh, number fourteen is expenditure journal entries FY seventeen slash eighteen, zero-four-one, zero-four, zero-one, three-nine-nine, and zero-five, zero-zero, two-zero through zero-five, zero-zero, two-eight.
Motion approval?
Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye? Opposed. Motion carriers, number fifteen, tax refund application for the following...
Motion approval, aye? Second.
Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carriers, number sixteen, is budget amendments, budget amendments FY seventeen slash eighteen, thirty-two-point-one through thirty-two-point-three.
Motion approval, second.
Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. carriers, number seventeen, personnel change status.
Motion approval?
Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carriers, number eighteen, is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight-zero-zero-three-seven-seven-zero through claim number eight-zero-zero-three-nine-nine-nine. Motion made second discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carriers, number nineteen, insurance report on inmate population, Sean.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Uh, population of the jail this morning was six-hundred-nineteen, uh, five-hundred-twenty-one being male, ninety-eight female, seventy-four currently on NDA monitoring devices, and fifteen more pending.
Thank you. Number twenty is announcement of interest items and, uh, possible future agenda topics.
Just want to remind everybody to go vote. Uh, early voting is now, and election day for the runoffs are next Tuesday.
Is, does anybody know what the hours are for early voting?
Seven to seven, I think.
For early voting?
Hours for everybody?
Eight to five, Monday through Wednesday, and then I think it's seven to seven on Thursday, Friday.
Any other announcements? Twenty-one is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Here you go, Lou Gerard. Thank you.